Is Zach coming?
I don't think Zach will be here.
I brought my coins to show you. Found a nineteen oh nine standing Liberty Head nickel.
So that'd be all silver.
No, actually a seventy-five copper twenty-five nickel.
Really? And not too much really.
Founded a troop at a nineteen ten.
Man.
House location.
Lady Liberty. So that makes sense because Roosevelt's on the downtown side of New York.
How many senses it make?
Yeah, right. I saw the other day, I said Lady Liberty is actually a man.
Oh, when did that change?
I was like, okay, but you know, it's one of those conspiracy guys. Oh, that's cool.
One at the other night.
Thank you, man.
I would have thought this was a Canadian coin.
Yeah, I saw you at jury duty the other day, I meant to say hi to you.
I know.
I was in a hurry going to Newson, I didn't see you coming back.
I would have thought that was Canadian, if I'm being honest.
Yeah, like a queen on it, yeah.
It's almost uncirculated, but it is.
Thank you, so it's worth a lot.
This is, this is.
About twenty-three, twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, that's a, that's silver, so that's at least close to that.
Ninety percent silver.
Looks weird.
You don't find many of them.
My daughter just sold all her Philharmonist to pay some of her tuition. Got to make my ass some skin in the game. You're paying this month.
I'm so proud, I almost got it blown up to the.
Thirty seconds out, let's get ready to govern.
I feel like Franzel needs the strong government.
Strong government? At least he didn't hit it as hard as he used to.
That's what I was talking about. The one that'll stop your heart.
Better put your earplugs on, bro.
I'm now called over to this meeting of the City of White House Council for today, March the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, it is six P M. Ms. Hargis, will you please call the roll?
James Wonsley.
Here.
Zach Briscoe. Franzel Burns.
Here.
John Chambers.
Here.
Michael Lowe.
Here.
And Matt Lazarine.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent, Councilman Lowe, would you mind leading us in a word of prayer? Please stand if you're able and join Councilman Lowe as he leads us in a word of prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this yet another day to serve our community. Help us to make the right decisions to benefit the citizens. Thank you for the staff, the first responders. Forgive us of all our sins, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join the council in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state, under God, one end of the state.
Thank you, please be seated. All right, that takes us to item D, presentations, Mrs. Black.
We do not have any tonight, Mayor.
All right, you're seeing everything there is to present. Which takes us to item E, community interest, hopefully there's some interesting things.
Oh, why?
Uh, Mayor and Council, we continue our renovations at one oh one East Main with a still on target for opening date in August. And we have set a date for our second Shade Man Park concept planning open house, which will be Thursday, April twenty-fourth, here in the council chambers, from five to seven, it will be come and go. And Erin Martinez and I have seen some very preliminary concept plan drawings, and it's very exciting, so we can't wait to, until we're at a point where we can share those with the community and you all. And Keep White House Beautiful will host their community-wide garage sale on Saturday, March twenty-ninth, and they will host their annual trash off on Saturday, April fifth. And the Chamber of Commerce is hosting their reverse raffle on April twenty-sixth, so if you're not already signed up or have tickets to get involved in those things, we recommend you do so now.
Are those kids swinging over a pool?
It's a play mat.
Blue turf.
Okay, all right, well. Got excited. Anything else on the subject of community interest?
Something else I saw with the trash off garage sale stuff, uh, today at Commissioner's Court, they were talking about, I think, March the thirty-first through May the first. You can pick up vouchers at your J P offices, uh, the annex, and a few other places, I think, uh, the nine oh one center for three cubic yards, which is roughly a truck bed, so be a good time for citizens to get rid of some trash, so.
And they usually let us have some here at city hall for citizens to pick up, so we'll see if we can't get some.
No, just holler at me, I'll be glad to help with that.
And your utility bill will get you into the landfill as well, take it up there once a month.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mills on wheels, anybody that's interested in volunteering, they always need a helping hand. Good people over there, we've done some recent fixing of some doors and some ceiling tiles and just a bunch of good people over there, so just all that's in there.
Yes, sir, thank you. Anything else from council on a matter of community interest? All right, that takes us down to item F, the consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda for your consideration, one of them is the quarterly investment report, and the other one is approval of the minutes of the city council meeting on February the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. If anyone on council sees a reason to move one of these items onto the regular agenda, we can entertain that, otherwise I'll entertain a motion to confirm the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to confirm that as presented.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the consent agenda passes. That takes us down to item G, other action items, ordinances, resolutions, or public hearings. Number one is discussion, consideration, and action on resolution R twenty-five dash zero three twenty-five dash zero one, implementing a drainage maintenance policy, Mrs. Black.
Mayor and Council, over the past year, we have received an increasing number of requests for the city to review and address drainage issues that are occurring on private property. Um, as a part of that review, we do go out and take a look at the issue and determine whether or not, um, those issues fall under the responsibility of the city as defined by Texas state law. Um, in preparing responses to our citizens, I came across another city that had a policy that I thought outlined well. The responsibilities and the differences between those responsibilities at the city level and then private property owner issues. And as you all know, our second item on the agenda tonight, uh, is another stormwater issue that we've been discussing for quite some time. Um, and I think it would be helpful if we had an adopted policy that clearly defined our roles and responsibilities when it comes to drainage on private property versus public property. Um, our attorney has reviewed this policy and has indicated that it falls, it does follow state law and, um, would be in compliance with those regulations. And so staff is recommending approval. The other thing it does is it allows us to provide a score to drainage issues, so it will help us prioritize those stormwater projects that we have going forward.
Any comments or questions from council on this policy?
Great idea.
Yeah, I think this will save staff time as well, because looking at this, most of it is just pulled as an interpretation of the state code and kind of organized into a single document, which is nice.
And it gives the citizens something to understand too, so I think that's another helpful avenue. It's clarification sometimes is helpful.
Um, any, any other questions or conversation on this? Hearing done, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution R twenty-five dash zero three two-five dash zero one to implement a drainage maintenance policy as recommended.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the motion carries. All right, that takes us down to item G two, receive report and provide staff direction regarding drainage on Dewes Drive. So I'll go ahead and, Mrs. Black, if you want to start with a summary of this, um, and I can call Mr. Hawkins up, or, you know, however you guys, however you guys want to do it is fine.
But my mayor, I'll go ahead and start, and so Mayor and Council staff has been reviewing some drainage concerns on Dewes Drive, uh, probably, I know before my tenure with the City of White House, which is longer than five years. Um, and it is, it has been a combination of a couple of things, so the city has done some improvements that fall under public property, um, along the roadway by cutting in some ditches along Dewes Drive. So when Dewes Drive was originally constructed, it was outside the city limits and did not comply with city standards neither then nor now. Um, when Dewes Drive was brought into the city limits, I think these drainage concerns were expressed at that time or sometime later, and the city has been working towards trying to find a solution. Um, and again, we've, we've done a couple of things, so we've met with the property owners out there several times, we've had our engineers take several looks, um, at this to see if there can be a solution designed. Um, but again, according to state law, we are limited to doing work only on public property. Private property owners do face some drainage issues, I know they've faced flooding in their homes over there. Um, unfortunately, it does not meet the standard that state law sets in allowing us to do work only on public property. Um, so what we have done is we have gone out and we have cut a ditch on the north side of Dewes Drive. Um, I know that homeowners, after that was done, have expressed some concerns, and we've still gone back and deepened that ditch in some areas where it was too shallow and we had some water running across the roadway. And then we've, we've looked at a couple of other things, we've tried to negotiate with the homeowners, one of the things that's been brought up in the past is why did we do curb and gutter in some other areas of town? Um, that was through a petition process with the property owners who did a special assessment, who helped cost share in that. I think that same offer was made to the property owners on Dewes Drive, and it was not accepted, so that work was not done. Um, and so with that, um, staff is happy to answer any other questions that you may have. I will say that right now, we leave it as, um, the issues that remain over there are not issues that can be fixed with public property improvements.
And, and also, in reading the packet, I guess, uh, a number of years ago, we offered to even purchase the property to use it as kind of like, uh, a holding pond, for lack of a better term, for water in that area.
I'm not sure what the intent was, I do know because the homeowner was facing some drainage issues, I think the city made a good faith effort. Um, but that, again, an agreement could not be reached between both parties.
And part of the curb and gutter would also be the homeowners giving up certain portions of their property for that expansion, and that wasn't agreed to either.
Is every single house on that street undergo flooding problems, every single one of them?
Um, I, I don't know that I could speak to that, I haven't heard or spoken to every single property owner, so I'd be hesitant to say yes or no on their behalf.
Yeah, I was on council when, uh, the matter, the, one of the times that it came up, so I was here, and I was here when we offered to make a purchase on the property. And we went about as high as we could on price, you know, we have to buy things at, at a market value, and, uh, and we couldn't reach an agreement, but the plan was to buy the property, level the house, and use it basically just as a, a place where water gathers. So I don't know if the technical name for that is a retention pond or, or, or whatever, but that was, that was the intent. And part of that, part of that conversation was also trying to install curb and gutter again. And, yeah, we couldn't reach, we couldn't reach an agreement with the landowners regarding easements as well, like what side of the, who would give up property so that the road could be widened? And that curb and gutter could be put into place, so that kind of fell apart here. I don't, I don't know that curb and gutter would do a whole lot for alleviating what we're experiencing on this particular address. We did have an issue at one point where the ditch wasn't flowing well enough, some water made it over the road, so that would add a little bit to what was accumulating there. But even with that, even with that resolved, I think there's still a lot of water that gathers there from the properties that are, I think they're the properties that are to the west, the southwest.
The south side of the roadway, so there are several homes on the south side of the roadway that are lower than street levels, so even installing curb and gutter would not necessarily prevent the amount of water that's coming into their homes.
Why do you keep it held in?
From the rear, yeah.
So that's, I mean, that's the history as I know it, uh, on the property and the conversations that have been had, so we actually have the homeowner here with us today. Um, Marcus Hawkins, did you want to come up and speak to us, please? Just state your name and ad, your address is pretty well known, but.
I know, give him like a tourist site, uh, one oh seven, Marcus Hawkins, eleven oh seven Dewes Drive, White House, seven oh seven. I was listening to what you were saying, I don't know who all was against the city coming in and robbing the street, uh, doing the maintenance that should, that should have been done. This, this thing's been going on since ninety-eight, ninety-eight. Years going, I mean, years of, and it really affects me. And the neighbor next door to me, he dug like a homemade hole where the water, when the, the back behind where I live, uh, when, when it fills up, he dug a hole next to his house where like the retaining water would run and fill up.
Yeah.
And it's just, it's like, now I got two problems. Because that's a breeding ground, mosquitoes, I mean, it's summer coming, snakes. I mean, it's just like, I'm the one that's getting affected.
Besides your house, are there any others on that side of the street that are having issues?
No, the neighbors next to me, they're, I mean, the water gets real high in their yard as well. But by them digging an extra hole, whatever you want to call it, it, it takes the, some of the water off of them. But it still leave me in a shallow.
How long, how long have you been living through this?
I just moved back here, uh, I'm purchasing a house from my mother, she used to live there, but she lives in Longview now. So I took over, and I'm trying to, I'm, I'm fixing the house up, I'm putting my money into the house. So I want to stay back here because I graduated, I'm from White House, so I moved back here. So I'm trying to develop and get the house back as it was, because she had remodeled the whole house and it flooded over. From the top to the bottom, I'm like, and I don't, I know how she feel because I was staying there and I don't woke up and you got like a foot and a half or something, it was even almost two feet of water in the house.
Okay, my question is, how old is the house?
The, I do believe the house was, uh, they fixed it, and I mean, it was, uh, nineteen seventy-five.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's an older house.
And you bought it when?
I'm buying, I'm purchasing it now.
Okay, but it's owned by your mom?
Mother, yes, uh-huh.
When did she buy it?
And, I mean, they started in nineteen seventy-five, her and my father at the time.
Oh, so they bought it new?
Yes, it was built.
Okay.
And it was like the third house, I do believe, that was on that street that was built. You know, uh, because it was like my uncle, then my grandmother, then my mother, and then came in and built their house, so.
So, uh, the flooding started recently though?
No, ninety-eight.
So it started in ninety, that's still twenty years after, twenty-five years after they built the stuff, right?
Because, I mean, like I say, I don't know during renovations, uh, even since we got those new apartments now, water comes off that hill. And plus, like, the guy that previously, previously used to own it, I call him the hole, because there's nothing in there, he stuck, it is, if you ever walk back there, he put a measuring stick in the middle of that hole just to see how deep it gets.
And that's his retention pond?
For lack of a better term.
Yeah, like, I mean, I can't.
I mean, I mean, I don't know what it used for, because like I say, we was young and I asked him, me and my brother asked him, what, are you putting fish here or, no, I just want to see how deep it gets.
Okay.
And I'm just telling you, I mean, I, I know how it is in White House because I grew up here. And like I say, the previous guy that owned the house, before they start building those little vapor shop in that little shop in the area. He wouldn't let White House come in and take four feet of this property to put the property drainage through there. So it's, it's been ongoing, because I know when we was, uh, little, uh, younger, uh, White House, when they supposed to put us in the city limits, they put the city limits sign across the street to keep us from having sewer from the city. You know, it was just a lot of stuff, like a lot of tactics that was used, the, the former city manager, Mr. Fight, he wouldn't declare when we stayed a flood zone, which it was clearly a flood zone. Because when it rains hard and fills that hole up, it has nowhere else but to go back on the house.
So I'm no city engineer, is there a reason why we only did, because I don't know the answer. Is there a reason why we only did ditches on the north side of the road and not on both, or you, is it, is it, that, that's the best practice or?
I, it was engineered by, yeah, our, one of our city engineers, I, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know either.
Yeah, because I would say this.
But still, but still, would that help? I mean.
I'm going to tell you what will help, and this is.
Well, I, 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 let me just say this, I've looked at your house about two, three times. At least I've gone out there, I'm just speaking for myself.
Okay.
Because I, I don't like it flooding, I, I hate it for you, you know, um, back twenty thousand years ago, we used to go on private property, but thank God it hasn't been ended. But it's a delicate deal, you know, I mean, I got problems on my property.
Right.
I wish the city could come in and fix my property, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm just talking, we're just talking.
Right, right.
You know, because, uh, but have you had a surveyor out there or a, a, a person to come out and, and professionally look at the property and determine what's wrong? I mean, maybe, uh, put a couple of more, uh, what do you call those drains?
Fresh drains.
Fresh drains down?
That's all it needs, a big, a nice fresh drain in the back of the property and run that water off somewhere else.
But you can't ask me to pay for it.
You can't ask me to pay for it either.
It's your property, sir.
Okay, well, I know what, this is my property.
And I'm not, I'm.
And it's not, it's not my property.
You're not responsible for my property.
Right, because this is somebody else's property that's flooding my property.
Well, it's called, it's called a court, sir.
You know, and I believe me, I, if that, if I get a drop of water in that house.
Yeah.
Oh, it's going to be court, it's going to be media, I mean, it's going to be, because I'm, I've been going through this for years, and it's like, you, you get tired of the same, same, well, Mr. Harvey, we're going to help you, we're going, I've been hearing this for years.
But you have never called a person to look at the elevation and what it would approximately cost to even correct the situation. Everything, just about everything in life can be corrected, except death.
And I know that.
Yeah.
And I send that up, we all got.
I just wonder, I'm just curious, I, I would like to help you if I, if we, if I could.
I mean, just.
But we have to go by the rule of law.
Right, and like I say, if I just give one drop of water in the house, it's going to be rules of law, because I've been, I've been going through this for years.
Yes.
And, and it's just like, you just, I've been coming to city council meetings for ye, for years, for years, and I just get the same, oh, we're going to help, we're going to help, mayor after mayor, city manager after city manager. So I'm just like, okay, all right, now I know what I have to do as mayor.
So Mr. Hawkins, if you don't mind me asking, some of the solutions that she spoke about, why were they never accepted?
That I don't know, I, I mean, because I, that's why I was asking, like, who's the one, or who's the people that's on my shit, because we're all relatives, and who said they didn't want it done?
I don't know, that was.
That was.
I know the ditches on the north side were done just about the same time that I came here. I will say, I have concerns that curb and gutter are not going to solve Mr. Hawkins' issue. The majority of that water is coming in from the rear side of his property where it collects and floods in that way. Um, curb and gutter at the street on the north side of his property is not going to solve the water issue that he's getting in the rear of his property.
I know, but y'all.
I'm not saying we shouldn't do curb and gutter, I'm just saying.
Right, because you just now, you just now dug it out like what, a few months ago? Because it was just, water was filling, and I sent you a video where you could see the water clearly coming across the street into the yard.
Mr. Hawkins has, has, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, that's probably why they put the ditch on the north side, was to keep any water coming off that north stra, off the north side of that street from getting to the south side. If I were, I'm not an engineer, but I'm guessing, is it to prevent some of that water?
Mr. Hawkins, has that helped you at all the ditches that they've renewed?
Well, since they came and dug it deeper than it was, I can see where the water's running more as normally than it was, because water was just filling up in that ditch.
Yes.
And then it just, it's coming.
So it is helping you?
Right now it is, yes, until, until we get some more rain, and once we get one or two days of hard rain.
Yes, sir.
I'm flooded, I'm flooded.
And I've got, so I, my house kind of sits down, and I'm downhill from everything, if it rains more than seven inches in an hour, my, the water makes it up to my house and it gets inside the house. If I haven't sealed it properly, I've lost carpet, I've lost flooring for it.
I didn't lost carpet, furniture.
Yeah.
All of it.
But my point is, I'm, I'm in this position, I know full well what the city can do, and if there was something the city could do, they would have done it for me, you know?
But I, I want to tell you, like, I have a friend that's had the same situation in Tyler, and the city of Tyler went in and corrected the problem, put proper drainage and everything in her backyard.
Well, everyone's different, I'm not exactly sure what, what led to that.
Is the rear of your backyard where this other thing is occurring, is that in the county, or is that city also?
City.
Okay, okay.
Everything is city.
Okay.
I mean, you treat it like it's rural area, but it's city. I mean, because trees in this hole, every, I mean, it just, it's a hole, it's holes.
But it's open land and then another residence behind you.
Yes, uh, okay.
You think there's, you think there's code enforcement issues happening back there?
If, believe me, if I know all the code, I would be done, enforced it, and, I mean, like I say, I don't know all the code, uh, I mean, we.
If there are code enforcement issues, we have to be able to see it from a public roadway.
Right.
I think more the concern is, is that if another private property owner has done something or is doing something that is causing damage to an adjacent property owner, that is a civil issue between the two private property owners.
Yeah, for sure.
China, multiple cases of that in the city, I have friends that have had issues, and I've explained to them, that's between you and that property owner, not the city. It'd be different if we'd gone back there and done something.
But I believe you have to be real careful, even in Texas, in, in that diverting water certain ways, you have to be very careful, you know, so I don't.
Yeah, as a city, if we, if we divert it, then we take ownership of it. As a private property owner, if you divert it and it impacts your neighbor, then you're, you're, you can get sued, I mean, the city can't be involved in a lawsuit between two civilians, but.
And I don't think that's what he was advocating for, just wanted to make sure.
No, because I just, I just want the problem fixed, because I can see two ways, you can divert it, either going, uh, east or west, because if we're, we're, uh, Mr. Rice's property, down below is just a creek.
But I've been out there, and I've only looked.
Will you please email us an assessment or a populated assessment based on the previous thing we just approved, the new policy? So at the very back, there's a drainage assessment, will you please email that completed for this project, coming out of this meeting?
The only distinction is, just keep in mind, we would primarily, we would use that for improvements or concerns on public property, and this is private property, but we can rate it by the same scale of what you're asking.
Well, but that's, that's, that's our call to action is whether or not it constitutes a public benefit.
We don't have a picture of that property handy, do we?
Um, like an, like a satellite picture?
No.
I think you can pull up Google.
A frontal picture of the actual structure.
Yeah, Google Maps would be good.
I mean, I have looked at your property, and it's, it's like a fishbowl.
It is.
I mean, the house is here, and, and it's just, it's, it's, you know, the house should be up here, and the land down here.
See, when they built that house years ago, like I say, it was a third house, and they didn't, I guess whoever built it didn't build it up high enough, but they built it what they thought was high enough. And then that's when my uncle next door to me came in, and that's when he built his up higher.
Now you get his water too, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean.
So that's the reason why twenty seventy-five and ninety-eight, the issues increased, because as more houses being built, they're building them higher, which is the cause of that.
Right, right.
There it is, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, so it sits down, well, your uncle's house is there on the left, is that right?
Uh, yes, if you.
If you're looking at your house?
Yeah, if I'm standing in front of the house, it'll be to the right.
Thank you, Mr. Leslie.
And I've, so when it started raining pretty hard, when you first started coming in, I jumped in my car, ran over there and checked it out, so I saw the before and after of the, you know, the water coming across the road, and this is before we dug that ditch, so this is pretty old. I mean, that's a pretty deep ditch now with rocks, you know, like. I mean, that's a pretty deep ditch now with rocks, you know, like twenty-two. Giant river rocks in it and stuff now.
Interesting.
Yeah, we did get sediment in the ditch, right through here where it comes down from those apartments and runs through here, so we try to keep a pretty good eye. Right here that we get a pretty good amount of sediment, after it rains, we try to keep a watch on that, um. And then it was coming over the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, right here.
All that little here.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, what would you want, what, if you had a wish, what would you want done?
If I had a wish?
Yeah, if you have a magic wand.
If I had a magic wand, just, if I could flood that water and have it drain out somewhere where I wouldn't have to come? And pray every time it it rains hard and look out my back door and like, I got one inch.
But who wants, who who do you want the work to be done by?
Whoever it is responsible. Or just, just.
I know, and I hate it for you, I I personally hate it for you.
You know, because like I say, I mean, I know y'all talking about a purchase in one time, I don't know what was the price that y'all throwed out or.
It's like, can you do an overview?
It was an executive session conversation.
Okay, okay, okay.
It's one of the few things I can get trouble for is sharing.
Okay.
You can ask your sister. Your mom, yeah, right.
So which one is the the Rice property?
That's your mom? That we spoke to? About purchasing it?
Yes.
Oh.
Like, where's the pond from behind his house? In those trees?
In in those trees, it's just a hole. No fish, no nothing, it's just a hole, it's just, and it's built up all around on one side, so when it fills up, water comes back.
And all those trees and that that is in the city, or is it, where's the county start, that area? Do we know?
The county, uh.
That's all I was gonna be saying.
You're kind of in the heart of the city here, but it does, yeah, it it cuts in every once in a while, but.
Okay.
Good old backhoe would help you out.
I mean, it would be backhoe.
French drains would help me out too.
Well, I mean, French drains are, uh, you would need more than French drains, I think, for the amount of water that comes in here and what you need to move.
If you put a nice sized French drain. Cause I seen one on the end of Hayden Road, it's concreted and everything, that's all I was.
A French drain?
Yep.
But you still gotta divert that water away from that house, you still gotta do it.
One of the things we talked about when I met with Mister Hawkins on site, you know. The majority of the water is at the rear of the home when it rains heavy, um. So even a French drain to get the water to the roadway, right, so if the property owner put in a, uh, some sort of drainage system to get it to the roadway. There's no existing infrastructure to get it then from the roadway to one ten. Um, which could be a public purpose, right, because it's connected to a roadway and public property. But the grade at which it would have to be to get it to flow from the back of that yard.
Would be deeper than the ditch.
The street would be deeper than a regular ditch, so we'd have to have an in-ground storm sewer system, and so. My last correspondence with Mister Hawkins was, if you have an engineered solution that you would like the city to look at, we're happy to do that and review it. I understand, you know, hiring an engineer is probably not what a private property owner wants to do or is able to do. And so I don't, I don't mean to be presumptuous on that, but, um.
But the kid even that is, it would have, the work would have to be done getting it to the road, and then we could, we could tie in.
To one of the roads, either this one or to or to one ten.
But to be a remedy, you've got to do something on that private property, inevitably.
And that's Mister Rice, the man, uh. Cause that's where the holes is, I mean, that's, it's on his property.
Well, isn't that hole keeping some of the water from making it to you?
No, when it fills up.
When it fills up though?
When it fills up, like I say, who knows, because like I say, that hole been there, like I say, years ago, and the guy just built it. And he built it up on one side, so that way when it fills.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so, so, it's like, if it was closed in, I might not help flood, bro, who knows?
Have you talked to him, sir?
I talked to Mister Rice, I didn't talk to him, him and his wife come out, we sit with rainbow sun in the yard, praying, talking. I mean, cause I'm like, I told him, I said, this is, I'm just trying to get the problem fixed, I'm not trying to go to court of law, to the civil court. I'm just trying to get the problem fixed, because, I'm gonna tell you, it's it's, it's really sad when you have to. When it rains more than one day, and I'm sitting here like praying, Lord, don't let it, don't let it flood. And I'm opening, cause I got, I got video, I mean, like I said, I'm opening my slide back door and just like, I got about an inch before it come in the house.
Mister Hawkins isn't the only one in town that faces that issue.
Cause I think some more on that.
There's some in the road, there's some more south, there's some on Accertap, I mean, we've, we've got several, um.
The key is our job is we have to follow the law and use taxpayer dollars the way we're legally allowed to.
You know, cause I thought they was gonna fix it one time, but I felt like they end up using the money to fix Rainbow Drive. Cause Rainbow had a flooding problem also. And I come down through Rainbow, they got curbing, I seen an engineering retainer wall, I don't know if the city did it. But I seen a retainer wall, I seen French drains, I seen curbing. I seen aprons in the in the driveways, I.
Well, if you don't go by the law, then you got big problems.
Well, I know that, I'm.
I know, I know, it involves me.
Yeah, Rainbow Drive, that's, so that's public property.
Right.
That was drainage, drainage solutions that were made on public property, which is what we're allowed to do, what we're kind of bound to do.
And I think that was the same offer that was given to the.
The curb and gutter, yes. But that wouldn't have fixed his problem, the curb and gutter would not have fixed his problem.
I don't, I'm not an engineer, but I don't, I don't think.
Well, I saw it, I mean, I saw an example of it when water was coming across the road, and I saw an example of it when water wasn't coming across the road. Cause after we dug it out and it rained again, I went and checked it out, just to make sure nothing was coming across the road, and it was the same, same situation.
Yeah, cause once that back fill up, it's. Yep, every time. Even like I said, the neighbors right there, their house, they dug a hole like directly back behind the house. And it, and I'm like, now I got this two holes, I mean, cause once, they did it to re- uh, relieve some of the water off of these. Because it was about to come in their house as well, and their house is built up, it's, you know, higher than West Bay.
So can you see what your neighbor did from the road, can you see that hole from the road?
You can't see it unless you get out and walk in, literally walk in my backyard and you can see like, there it is, because it's trees and brush back there.
It's just grown up, so you can't really see the tree, the elevation.
Right.
Is there any public roadway or access that we could see it from?
No, you have to get out of it, and like I say, it's.
Falling through the woods.
There you go, unless you come through the back way, you know.
So even from the, even from the code violation perspective, like that's not how we can identify code violations. And it's frustrating for us, but it's what we're, oh, there's swimming pools in the backs of people's yards that have brush that have grown up around it that we can't see. And because we can't see it, we we can't act on it as a code violation. That's happened on a street over there next to, I forget which street that was. But it looked like Jumanji back there. So that's kind of the the situation that we're in, is we can't, we can't really help from the code violation.
So.
We can't.
I'm gonna cut you off, so in other words, you're telling me if I go and clear that fence line, fence line off with a chainsaw, could you see it then?
I don't know, I.
I mean, I'm sure you could.
Yeah, I mean, if we can, then we can, I mean, you can stand on the road.
No code violation into digging a hole or having a.
So standing water is not, not an issue?
I think there, I I think we'd have to make a determination, or our lawyers would have to make a determination between a pond.
Which is what that would be, yeah, exactly. Yeah, I'm re- I'm reaching here, I mean.
Look, I'm I'm just saying.
Cause we would love to find a solution, but we also have to act within.
Right, I I mean, I understand that too, I mean, this code you have to go by too. And I'm just.
Because it would get totally out of hand. I got need, I want you to fix my fence.
You know?
But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be fixed.
But like I say, if it floods again, I, I mean, like I say, I will. I gotta do what I gotta do, cause I'm 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 tired of coming up here talking, it just.
Well, at least.
It gets old, it gets old.
It'll be two years this fall, I've been on the council, I think this is the first time we've been able to have a good back and forth, because of the way the the agenda was. So I at least appreciate this opportunity to have this discussion with you.
Yeah, I really do, yeah.
And hopefully, maybe I can keep, everybody put their heads together, let's, let's find a solution, I mean, cause like I said, I don't wanna. Go to court unless I'm forced, but it's just.
Court, engineer's office.
Well, the city has engineers, they just came to look at it.
Yeah, well.
I'm not an engineer, but I can look and just tell if you had a big enough French drain, like you say, if you.
Private property, sir.
I know that, but I'm just, I'm just saying from my point of view.
Yeah.
If I, if they, if Mister Rice don't have a big enough drain to put back there, and maybe run it towards one ten or run it back towards Willingham. Because there's, there's nothing back on the backside of his property. And it's a creek, if you walk down, it's a creek just at the bottom of the property. And it just, you know. Either right or left, I mean, that's all it takes, right or left.
So, he he dug a hole, right, he's got some hole digging stuff?
Who, uh?
Mister Rice.
I don't know what it is, like, I, I mean, I.
I mean, if all it takes is trenching across your property and his, that's something that that you could do, would just, you you can rent some equipment from A-one Reynolds and.
But that's not gonna fix my flooding.
I think, I mean, if you're saying if a French drain would fix it, then so would a a canal, so would a simple.
Well, I'm just saying, like, if you run it towards one ten or to Willingham. It's gonna have to run off something, somewhere, it's not just gonna, I can't do like the neighbors and dig a hole and think that's gonna solve.
Oh, I thought you said he had a creek running behind his house.
It's down below the hill where his property is.
Oh, I see, so too far away probably for him to tolerate this, digging a trench.
I believe it's probably further if he go around the fence line where his property, all the way where my uncle's property, all the way down. I mean, it's probably further to go that that way, that route than going towards one ten. Cause one ten is a little closer to run it off down Willingham.
Yeah, I mean, I I definitely empathize, I've I've been there, and I took two different attempts to alleviate it, which helped. I've got one drain that goes down into my creek, I've got one drain that kind of pushes it down the line for my neighbors to deal with. But even with that, you know, if we get seven inches or more, it still, it still comes in the house, so.
And my neighbors' cross street, their yard floods every time it rains a lot, they don't go in the house, they do, it's cause they have a sump pump, but.
Yeah, you'll notice there's stone in my yard where grass used to be, because I just don't wanna replace it when it drowns every time, so. I sim- I I definitely sympathize what you're, what you're going with.
I I thought about putting a retainer wall, but if I do that, it's gonna run water on the neighbor, or it's gonna run water on somebody else.
A retaining wall, oh, coming in from the back?
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's kind of how it goes with water, it it goes down to your neighbor, and then your neighbor picks it up from there, I mean, that's just. That's how I get my water, I get my water from my neighbors. Um, it's not their water, it's falling out the sky and coming down, coming downstream, but, yeah, I mean. Yeah, if there's something, if there's something within your power to do, if you actually wanna get it fixed, then that's the route I would go. I mean, court with the city, it's it's an option, but I don't, I don't see that really getting anywhere. As far as a an ac- actual fixing your problem.
Steph doesn't have any recommendations to make on this either, so, but we're kind of at a.
Y'all have looked at it for everywhere, any which way you can, right?
We have, and I've had a couple of different engineers come out and take a look at it, um, to see if there's something we can do, um. Unfortunately, the hurdle is the public purpose, being able to spend taxpayer dollars on private property. And making sure that it rises to the level of a public purpose, and we're just, we're just not there. So at this point, the city has, and it's offered all efforts? Yes.
Several people have tried to circumvent the letter of the law. And it, honestly, I mean, that's what happened, and and there's just no way to get there.
Thank you, Mister Hawkins.
Okay, well, like I say, a drop of water comes in my house.
Yes, sir. Alright, that takes us down to item G three, discussion consideration in action, a request from Vinland Meads to permit the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption. Off property. And tastings on property at the White House Farmers Market held at one oh nine East Main Street in White House, Texas, Ms. Hargis.
Ms. Mayor, um, Vinland Meads has requested permission for onsite tastings of less than one ounce. And for the sale of mead, um, at, for off premise consumption at the White House Farmers Market. The Farmers Market has obtained their special event permit for the twenty twenty-five season. And Vinland Meads has secured vendor space, um, at the market. The meadery does have the needed permits for their regular operations through the T A B C. Um, but in order to have the event, they have to have an event permit as well. Um, and in order to complete that application, they need to have permission from the property owner, which in this case is the city. Coordinates one eight zero three two seven zero two requires permission from the city council to possess or consume alcoholic beverages. On city property, um, during special events, which is what the Farmers Market has. Um, Vinland Meads is seeking your approval for the entire twenty twenty-five market season, they would like to come more than one time. Uh, there's a site layout and that was in your packet, and along with a proposed letter that if you choose to approve this tonight. That I would send, um, to Vinland Meads so they could complete that application with the T A B C.
Have we done this for any other situations like this before?
I only know of one situation in the past where we've had, um, had this, it was, um, one of the chamber events. Uh, Freedom in the Park, one year, we had.
We had a tent that served, uh, consumption on premises, actually. It was shortly after we passed it, I think, yeah.
Are we talking beer, liquor?
It's kind of like beer. Chunky beer.
Yeah, hearty beer.
And it would just be, uh, from reading this, just a little taste, they're almost like communion.
It's one ounce, yeah.
And then the bottles that they would have would be for off premise.
And have we ever thought about developing a staff development ordinance for in the future? So this wouldn't have to come to co- to the council every time, that i- if it just met certain requirements?
So council, if that's your direction, we're certainly happy to do that, I think, um, staff would like to see a part of the special, for the special event permit process. That we could just approve, um, at the staff level, if you are comfortable with that.
I think at the time when they did this, they wanted it to come before council each time.
Because it was new, yeah, so they wanted, they wanted to have close oversight on anything, just to make sure that nothing untowards is happening, but.
Cause I think setting certain parameters like these parameters, which I think are very reasonable, would be easy to follow. Obviously, we can't have keggers in the park, so.
No.
That's the next step. You want my opinion?
Uh, sure, that's what we're here for, man.
I'm a guest at a hundred percent, keep it family.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Alright, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the request of Vinland Meads to allow. Uh, them to sell alcoholic beverages for off-site con- consumption and for tastings onsite at the White House Farmers Market. For the twenty twenty-five season.
My second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose, say no?
No.
That the motion carries. Alright, this, item number six. Nope, nope, I went down too far. Item number four, discussion consideration in action on the request for qualifications for a collection services for delinquent municipal court fines, fees and costs. Ms. Lusk, oh, she's already there. Everybody's sneaking up on me today.
Mayor council, on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, the city issued a request for qualifications for delinquent municipal court fee collections. In a total of four submissions per seat. The RFQ outlined the city and municipal courts' commitment to improving the consistency of justice by ensuring compliance with court orders. The purpose of the contract is to locate and contact defendants with delinquent citations using the latest tracking systems. Provide updated contact information to the court and encourage resolution. provide updated contact information to the court, and encourage resolution of cases through payment or other court programs. The four submissions were from Limeburger Attorneys at Law, M V B A Attorneys at Law, Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins, and Mott Attorneys at Law, and Tolteka Enterprises, D V A, the Phoenix Recovery Group. Because their responses contain confidential information, staff has not included them in your packet. After reviewing all submissions, staff found that all vendors had relevant experience and demonstrated capacity to provide these services. However, we recommend the selection of Limeburger Attorneys at Law because we currently use their services to collect unpaid property taxes with great success. Their proven track record with the city has established trust, reliability, and consistent results. We believe incorporating this new municipal court collections contract into our existing working relationship will create greater efficiency, continuity, and stronger communication between departments, ultimately benefiting the city and its residents. Staff does recommend approval, but there are additional steps that will need to be taken at the April council meeting to ratify, such as a resolution, public service notice, or public notice, excuse me, and signing an agreement.
Alright, any questions from council?
Uh, I think Limeburger does a great job, uh, we use them in other stuff, I know tons of other agencies that use them. Uh, I, I agree, they're, they're be, they're the great ones to go with, so.
Have we ever rece- received a complaint about their services as far as collection? Alright.
I've had the opportunity to meet a lot of their staff, uh, you know, work at the Commissioners Court, and then those guys have an excellent staff, excellent system, so.
Very professional.
Stacy Killingsworth from Limeburger is here, if you have any questions for her.
Oh, okay.
Yes, thank you, I'm Stacy Killingsworth, I'm a partner with Limeburger Firm. Uh, Jim Lambeth had to teach a class to some tax collectors today, so he did not make it. Um, we're happy to be a part of your community and happy to answer any questions y'all have today.
She came all this way anyway.
I live among you, it was a nice.
Part of the job, man.
Just have car rule travel.
Are you an attorney?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Tell Jimmy owes you dinner for.
Uh, yes. Uh, Jim, Jim did mention, uh, that he's gotten to visit with you multiple times through the county and again, we're, um, happy to be a part of y'all's community already and to be working for you guys and your citizens and I think this would be an excellent addition.
And the professionalism that y'all, y'all do, the way y'all handle things is just great, so I've seen it on many levels.
We appreciate that.
Lots of good experience.
Yes, uh, we, um, we are the largest law firm that does this, uh, here, that does debt collections. Uh, here in East Texas, just alone, we have twelve attorneys, uh, at Limeburger, and we bring the most resources and the most people, and that ends up with great results for our clients, we're very proud of what we're able to do.
With competitive prices?
Yes. Well, it's kind of like our tax collections are, um, set by statute, so the legislator, uh, indicates and dictates how we charge, and it is no cost to you guys, to the city. So it is an additional cost that the delinquents, um, do have to pay, it's an add-on fee.
That's my joke. I mean, it's, it's an R F Q, not R F P, so we don't, we don't get to see like prices necessarily.
How big a problem is this?
They got twelve lawyers, man, it's a huge problem.
The last I checked, our court, uh, delinquent fines and fees were the, the collection fees were generating about seventy five hundred dollars a year.
It's not a huge contract, yeah.
It's more than our delinquent taxes were last year.
Hey, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any more questions?
Which Limeburger also handled that, so.
Thank you so much for your time.
Yes, thank you, I was nice to meet everyone and I appreciate your time.
Be careful going down thirty-one if you go that route.
That is, you know, I mean, it really wasn't bad today, um.
Hit on the swivel, there's deer too.
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
All over, my eleven-year-old told me that nature was naturey.
Oh, okay.
That is true.
Sometimes it verbs. Thank you. Alright, any more questions or comments from council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Limeburger Attorneys at Law for collection services for delinquent municipal court fines, fees, and costs, as recommended.
I'll second the motion.
Alright, a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, that the motion carries. Alright, now we're going to number five, which is discussion, consideration, and action upon authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Motorola for enhanced dispatching data and communication software. Chief Johnson, come on down, thanks for joining us, sir.
Mayor, Council.
He didn't sneak up on you.
So this is, uh, the next big step in the communications, uh, dispatch enhancing project I've been talking about for the last, about six, seven months. Um, this is the execution of the contract with Motorola. Uh, to be honest with you, I've been very cautious as this project has kind of grown legs to make sure we, we don't get into a contract too soon. Uh, the other agencies involved are at the point, same point now, they're beginning to sign contracts and working out the agreements with Smith County I T. And of course, our Tyler I T working directly with them to get the, the program up and operational. So, um, without any questions, I'm in, uh, the direction for Ms. Black to go ahead and execute the con- the contract is my recommendation. You have questions on the project or anything, I can answer them at this time.
So this will be, I, I'm familiar with it from the sheriff's office perspective, so, like our vehicles, we can show exactly where they are on a map at any one time. You can actually click on it, show out faster, drive, it's kinda crazy, kinda the same system for this as far as where your apparatuses are.
Spielman for Fire.
Spielman for Fire.
So what this does, it's enhanced mapping, different overlays, tracking of the vehicles, uh, which will all inter- interop- operate with the other agencies respond to within the county. So it's where we should have been maybe twenty years ago, and we're getting there now, um, and so it is, it's really getting started.
And it talks about fire hydrants, so this map will, like, show where the fire hydrants are located on every road to help y'all know time points, cool.
So do y'all get, y'all get a login and access, you get map display where you could pull it up and?
Perhaps each truck will have that online access.
And in your firehouse, is it something you could have access to?
State, well, yeah, we'll have a base and a A B link in the firehouse as well.
It'll have, it'll have a CAD screen that will show calls and who's on them and.
Right, yeah.
Just, yeah, vehicle locations, call, that's, that's amazing.
No, that's cool.
So this will be a major plus for you.
Oh, it's gonna be a major benefit to our response and really accountability is a, is a big part of it. I know on the police side, that's a big part of it, but it is for us as well, um.
Well, on the fire side, taking command is a huge, we learned that in our, our alert training, and so this allows you all to have control and command.
Right, knowing where your players are at the exact time where they are. I do wanna remind you that we, we did have, uh, a generous, uh, contribution from Smith County nine one one district back in September that basically funds a project. So, um, as far as our out-of-pocket moving forward, there'll be about a, it's a fifty-three thousand dollar project we estimate completely, once I get hardware firm, uh, invoices or tour totals for that. Um, and then about nineteen hundred dollars a year, which is your software for your, your, I guess, user fee and whatnot. But that will be reduced, that will be offset because we will no longer have to use for our active nine one one and our pagers. So we will be doing away with pagers.
Do you have pagers?
Yes. In Torres County, that's me, so, I, I really wasn't taking a shot when I said. I wasn't taking a shot when I said twenty years old.
So do you guys have, you have A V L capable units in your?
No, no.
In your, not in your trucks now?
No.
Is this gonna be a part of that?
This will be, yes.
And there'll be status?
Stations, A V link.
With CAD status switching and all that stuff?
That will, let me check out.
Yeah, yeah, hit a button.
It totally changes, changed law enforcement, so I can only imagine what I do for fire services, so.
Yeah, I write software around this, I mean, that's what Pulse is, it's, it's great to know who's available and, and when and why, and, and if they're not setting themselves as unavailable when they should be, like, that's on there too. So it gives good, it gives you great oversight as chief of like where your units are and what they're doing, that's great.
Any impressions?
No.
Sounds a good idea.
Sounds exciting, we, we expect to show and tell, that'd be cool.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the next fire safety thing we have over there, we can check it out, right?
Alright, you can show us.
Oh, yeah. I'll show you.
I don't think I'm allowed to ride in fire trucks.
Or drive the truck.
Insurance doesn't cover that.
I know, I know, that, that is a call.
Alright, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I recommend to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Motorola for enhanced dispatching data and communication software.
I'm second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Alright, with that, the motion carries, thank you, chief. Alright, going down to item six, discussion, consideration, and action on a resolution R twenty-five dash zero two five dash zero two, electing to participate in a tax abatement agreement and adopting guidelines and criteria, Ms. Hargis.
Yes, Mayor, um, for you tonight is a considera- for consideration and action is Resolution R twenty-five zero three two five zero two. As the mayor said, electing to participate in tax abatement agreements and adopting the guidelines and criteria for those agreements. This is as authorized by the Texas, um, Tax Code Chapter three twelve. The agreements are used to support our existing businesses and attract new as well. Um, should you choose to approve tonight's resolution, it will reaffirm the city's guidelines and criteria for tax abatements. Um, the guidelines have been previously adopted by council and those do remain unchanged. Um, staff recommends approval to ensure compliance with state regulations and allow us to continue utilizing tax abatements as an economic development strategy.
Mayor, Council, I will just add, there are some, uh, bills before the state legislature right now that could impact our ability to offer tax abatements. Um, but because you have to renew these every so often, we went ahead and brought it before you tonight. Um, and if state law does change or impact our ability to do this, we will certainly comply with whatever those changes are.
There's no reason for me to recuse my, my vote for this because I'm on the E D C, is there?
No, sir.
Yeah, good question. So what, what I like that this lays out is there's so many layers you have to go through before that abatement finally gets ratified. Like, you have to be in a zone that's applicable, you have to get approval from, uh, you gotta get approached by the E D C or somebody that's, that's kind of, uh, empowered to make that agreement, then it has to get approved by council, and then it has to go before there was another, I think, a county level uh, layer that it had to go through.
And failure to comply with the aspects of it can involve being pulled, like.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, it's not like the mayor calls somebody and says, hey, this guy didn't pay taxes because I want, I want that here. It takes, it, it has to go through so many layers, and it's, and it's a negotiating tool, so it's something that we, we haven't really needed to leverage to get people to move here, but if something comes along that is on the edge of choosing between our community and another community, and it's something that the community really wants, and it's a huge economic advantage, primary employment, something like that. I think the last example we had of something like this was Jasper Ventures that was built back there. They've been an amazing part of the community and I would have done that one again, so. It's just great to have a tool that we're not gonna lead the negotiation process with, but it's good to have options when it comes to bringing things to our community. Now that we've got a fully funded E D C to give them a toolbox to pull from, I think is a good idea. Anything else from council? Alright, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution R twenty-five dash zero three two five dash zero one, electing to participate in a tax payment agreements and adopting guidelines and criteria as recommended.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Alright, with that, the motion carries, we're onto item seven, moving right along. Discussion and consideration of staff direction regarding the welcome to White House sign, Mrs. Black.
Mayor, Council, as you all know, we had, um, our welcome to White House sign was damaged last spring or summer by some high winds, and we had a volunteer who offered to repair the sign upon looking at it, and he felt like it needed to be replaced. Um, and he has been working toward that goal since then, however, at this time, he has indicated that that project is just a little bit too large for him to take on at this time, and so we need to be looking at other alternatives. Um, so I got that information last week, we have reached out to him about getting the parts and pieces of that sign back. Um, and I haven't heard a response just yet, but we'll be working with him for that. Um, but staff is open to direction on what all you would like to do for the replacement of that sign.
Well, you know, somebody makes a big light switch.
It's so happened that I went to Leon's Signs the other day. And met with the account manager and they were just the nicest people in the world. And, uh, there's certain advantages of having a actual sign company. I mean, they can do it in laminate, plastic, you know, strong, and they can put, a- affix a, uh, what's the word? Um, synthetic, uh, wood grain type. Light wood, yeah, and, uh, the benefit of that is they guarantee their work, they have a warranty. And they're really, they're experts in signage, and you know, to me, this sign is, this sign, i- it, when I first moved here, it was like a symbol, it was like a neat deal, you know, welcome to White House, you know. And it's just kind of a fixture, and, uh, I also wanna say that I think the city pressure washed the area out there. And, uh, anyway, so, uh, I'm all about, I'm all about signage, you know, but, uh, it's just a, it's some advantages, and I, they said they could do it between six, eight thousand dollars, you know, roughly nine thousand-ish, um, you know, and I, I, my jaw dropped. I, I don't, I don't know anything about signs, but, you know, I like people stepping up and then volunteering. I do, I really have the most admiration for that, but I like also to get something done. I mean, this has been what, six, six, seven, eight months, nine months?
A year.
It's time to get it on, you know, it's time to get with it, and again, it's a symbol of our community, you know, everybody right at the four points, right there.
So I guess the question comes, do we want to continue to try to refurbish the old sign for its historical value or get bids for a completely new sign that still pays homage to the old one, but it's?
Well, if we have a sign company that, that we can commission it out to, maybe we can get their opinion on what the best path forward is. I like the idea of, you know, kinda keeping what we had for historical purposes, but if, uh.
Does anybody got a picture of it? I don't even know that, is it bad, is it horrible?
Oh, of the current condition, I, I'd have to go back and see what I have, but.
So, so at this point, I mean, the, I guess the, the best thing to do is request staff to reach out to some sign companies and ask them for some cost analysis on using the current sign that is damaged and repairing it and.
How about we see if they can give us surrenderings of what they can do now?
Yeah.
Not using the old sign.
Not using the old sign.
Okay.
I'm afraid that waiting to try and get pictures of the materials from the old sign will further delay what we're trying to accomplish. And I don't know that there'll be much value in us moving forward.
I mean, the positive aspect about that is with the city center being such close proximity, that it could tie into the design, especially the city center by doing that also.
Maybe, I mean, you've got the existing platform is still there, the only thing, the frame is still there, so the only thing that's missing is the actual sign. But we'll, let, let us get a sign company out here and they can tell us what they can and.
Yeah, get, get a few, get a few options.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it'd be great to have something with a warranty. And make sure that whatever, whatever little bit extra we have to pay for weather damage, we, go ahead, go ahead and spring for that, yeah, cause it's gonna happen.
Also, I told them the other day, I said, the problem is, is can we adapt to a wind situation? I mean, they're, these guys are experts and they know how to properly engineer the rings that holds on the sign. And I think that's what probably happened, you know, to the old one.
Yeah.
I love that little sign.
I think it was reinforced, the edges were reinforced, but the eyelets that hold it weren't any heavier, and then it swung for, yeah, it was just something that would be, if it was engineered from the beginning, then I think that it would be, it'd be better, but yeah, that sign being gone, our flag might as well be at half mast. I get questions about it all the time.
I'm definitely interested in getting it replaced. I'm, I'm interested in getting it replaced, now, whether it's with the old sign or new sign, I'm, I'm, I'm open to looking at different views on that, for sure.
I would love to see some options.
But especially with the new city center coming online, it'd be cool just a block away to have something that tied in aesthetically.
It's gonna be, I mean, we see the design of the city center and knowing it sits on top of those nineteen thirty-eight rocks, you know, those, uh, MakeWords Project rocks that are there, so you might have to.
Might be something creative.
Update the fascia of those rocks and then, man, good luck. These are covering up our old rocks.
Be interesting to think about.
But yeah, they, I mean, if anybody can tie it in, they, I mean, I've seen the, the Stanton School, like, they've got half of it. But yeah, they, I mean, if anybody can tie it in, they, I mean, I've seen the Stanton School, like they've got half of it is rocks and then it starts up and it goes up and looks, uh, more modern. So there are, there are things you can do. But that's what I'm saying, it's gonna be a challenge. I'm interested to see how they, they rise to that.
But they're not asking me to do it.
Yeah, alright, so, direction to staff, get some quotes and some renderings on what that might look like. Yeah, on the pricing. Alright, so that's the end of that one. Uh, the last one is discussion and staff direction to this, on the city center grand opening, Mr. Martinez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
First time on the mic, right?
This is a monumental occasion.
Happy to run the anchor leg on this portion of the meeting.
I would say lead with a joke.
So as we get closer and closer every day to the opening of city center, uh, we need to start thinking about a plan for the celebration and opening. Um, obviously, it's a community-centered building and it needs to be a community-centered event. So we have plans to do, um, a bit of a celebration, showcase some police and fire vehicles, uh, do tours of the building, obviously dedication and ribbon cutting. Um, but we want to be stewards of the taxpayers' money. And we need a little bit of guidance on what y'all's expectations are for that day and what y'all think the community's expectations are for that day. So just real quick, um, last time we dedicated the city building was two thousand and four. So it's been a long time and, um, you know, we have a really big opportunity to do something really cool on that day. So, uh, we wanna make sure that from a marketing perspective and branding perspective that people know that it's a City of White House facility. And so, um, we're planning on using the city logo on, you know, all of our materials. Um, but what we did is we, in order to kind of start the conversation for you guys, we put together three options. Um, so starting with option one, um, obviously, we wanna have professional photographer there. Um, it's gonna be August, so we wanna have, you know, some sort of drink refreshments. We know we're gonna have to do things like invitations, cups, ice, you know, that kind of stuff, so. Option one is, you know, in the thousand-dollar-ish range. Um, obviously, we didn't itemize everything there, but you guys can kind of figure that out. Um, option two is a twenty-five-hundred-dollar range. That gives us the ability to do, you know, some individually, individually wrapped cookies. Um, with logos, you know, something people can, you know, enjoy and take away. Um, so we have, you know, a vendor that we talked to to get some pricing. Um, that's the sweet spot. They're willing to do City of White House and EDC logos on the, on the cookies. And then the final option was just, you know, the same kind of stuff, but do, um, you know, food as well. Um, so we found a vendor that was, would do, um, like charcuterie cups that you could kind of take and walk and take away. So, um, did I miss anything, Mrs. Black?
I was just gonna say, so when we were kind of brainstorming for this event and Erin and Morgan have done a great job and are working through policies and everything that need to go along with this. Um, the idea was to kind of show the spaces as they could be used. So when you're do- renting the banquet hall, kind of what an event in there would look like. Um, and so that was kind of where we started from and I'm, I'm grateful they put together a couple of different package options. We really wanna hear your feedback on what your expectations are and what all you would like to see.
Essentially, the idea is we just know, need to know how much, how big of a party you all want.
So this would be the whole, I mean, this would be the whole venue, right? Like it would all be used for this event, right? Yeah, I think, I think it needs to be, yeah, it's gotta be big, right? Right, man?
No, I, I, I love the idea. I, I looked at all three proposals, uh, got to speak with Leslie on this. Um, of course, the thousand dollars is a basic idea and, and I think everybody agree wants to spend tax dollars wisely. Absolutely, and, and, but this is also, this is a big thing for the city. Uh, it's another step forward in the progression we're going. Um, and, and I think the five thousand dollar option's a good option. I think the twenty-five-hundred dollars is a good option. Um, my recommendation would be for us to, to yes, go ahead with the option number two, the twenty-five-hundred dollars and reach out to the, the chamber and the EDC and see if they would like to make any donations. Cause they're gonna be partners with us in this building and the building usage, uh, to maybe pick up some of the stuff on the five thousand dollar options to get it up there and, and to see what kind of interest we can gather from them. That, that would be my recommendation, but I do agree with, uh, the mayor that doing this big, uh, and of course, we have Ashley in the room from the chamber. I'm sure she'll donate whatever money we need, but. I, I, I do think doing it big is important. This, this is a big thing for the City of White House.
Yeah, and it's, that's an awesome idea. It's a great opportunity for us to get the branding of those two organizations out there in the community too. Cause I think it's gonna be a big pull.
You can put your stuff on the cookies too.
They'll probably let you for that.
And that's the thing, are the vendors that we're looking at using, are, are most of them, are all of them local, hopefully? I mean, we'd love to be able to use.
But we started with some local, Morgan, probably I can speak to it, but we started with some local people and then, you know, trying to be responsible with the money too, so.
Right, that, but that'd be great if we could use as many local vendors as possible, because they're gonna be partners in using this facility also.
I hope we have forty thousand people there. I do, I mean.
Everyone get some small boats.
Chief Johnson will shut us down, that's a. The minute, maximum occupancy is written well established on the side of the building.
But yeah, it, it's good.
So yeah, I think, I think we set the tone with the twenty-five-hundred and then what the chamber and the EDC wanna bring to make the party even, even bigger, that sounds like a great idea. They had Lunchables, right? I mean, charcuterie.
But I mean, I hope we, I hope we seriously turn it into a big deal. I mean, it's something to really be proud of.
From what I've, from what I've seen in White House and the, the time I've been here, twelve years, whatever it is, I think our community partners have always shown up and I think the situation where this, that'll probably happen also, to make this e- even more special event.
Alright, sounds good.
Yeah, it sounds fantastic.
So Mayor, do you need a motion on this?
If you don't mind, because it's budgeted at one thousand, so.
Yeah, the twenty-five-hundred mark is probably where we wanna be. So then what direction to reach out to, uh, the EDC and the chamber?
I'd make that motion, as stated.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
This feels like cheating, but okay. Alright, I have a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no? Alright, with that, we got a plan. Now we just need a date.
Actually, I didn't say your last name.
Oh yeah, not on public record.
We have a tentative date, but the contractor gets a little nervous if I throw it out too much, so.
Love watching.
We love deadlines.
He sweats a little bit if I start to stay in the date too often, so.
Alright, so we're on to item nine, consider future agenda items. Uh, is a month long enough turnaround for the sign information, you think?
Yes, we'll have something.
Could have something on there for that. Um, City BG?
So Mayor, council, remember, our alphabet soup. Um, we did submit our preliminary grant application to the Texas City Land Office. They want some changes to our financial policies that we submitted as a part of that, so we'll be bringing some revisions back to you in April. Um, as Jennifer mentioned, there are some additional steps for the court collections to change the firm. And then, um, we also need to review our permitting fees, um, and so we will have some recommendations before you for that as well.
Um, yeah, so do you think there'll be any chance of, uh, do we need an update on any of the strategic planning stuff that's going without being viewed next?
I don't know that we'll be ready.
Okay. If it's there, then feel free to add that.
I think y'all remember me saying this, this is just me, in that if we give money to an organization, I really believe, I'm looking at as far as Joe Taxpayer, you know, that we need an accounting of where they are at, where they're going, whatever. Library, everybody that we give money to, I think there always should be an accounting. And I, I didn't say a, a two-hour dissertation, but just let us know what's going on.
Do you know of an organization that's lacking in that report that we could add to the agenda?
No, but I just, um, I'd like to see the library back.
So I guess I wanna make sure by that you mean that they're coming to a council meeting and giving an overview of what they're doing with those funds?
Yeah, what are we doing with, with the money that we give you? Uh, it just like, uh, Key White House Beautiful just did that and I admire them because they were proactive.
So Hank Senior Center as well, the library.
Uh, White House Brewers Association, every once in a while we get an update. I think we get an annual update from them, from Anthony.
And it, you know, and I wouldn't even be willing to just go by, uh, a letter from them. Not necessarily to show up.
Yeah, that's less stressful.
It is, it is.
So I do know that, um, Stephanie and I are working on, um, an annual process to kind of review.
You said that, that's good.
And those types of things, we have not got that together yet. It's on our list of things to do, hopefully, as we head into budget season. So it may be a little bit, and give them some sort of reporting guidelines that we expect to see back from them. Right now, they don't, they don't know what exactly we're looking for.
Because the city is blessed in that we're growing, man, we are growing. And I just think it'd be a great idea, you know? Police, fire, I would love to hear from them. What, what, what do they see in the next five years to ten years? I mean, good stuff, you know, so, just curious. Speaking of that, weather radar. Weather radar.
So what, what I'm, what I'm picturing you saying about the other organizations, you know, we get the weekly wrap-up where we see line by line everything that police and fire do. But it would be from those, like the library and, and those organizations, what you're talking about is more of a vision plan, like where you going the next five years?
What are you doing right now? Where do you go, where do you envision in five years addition to the library? Is it gonna be better? Should, are you running out of room? I mean, just, you know? Just in accounting. It's like if you gave me a thousand bucks.
Well, that's not accounting. I mean, accounting is, is like a line item review. What you want is like a, a, basically a strategic plan.
I think he means accountability.
Organization. Well, accountability is not future gazing.
Accountability and our future.
And or, so you'd settle for either one?
I would.
We're back to just, uh, update then. Anything else? Yeah, anything else for the, uh, agenda?
Let me know if I can ask. How is the reporting going, Miss Leslie, for like reporting the potholes and all that, the new system?
Um, it's going. We are working through some things on the staff side to kind of get it a little bit more streamlined for us. Yeah, we've had several and have closed several and addressed several things.
I just used one the other day.
Are those on our graphs that we, that we see at the end?
It is not yet.
But they will be, so that'll be as far as trying to make it an agenda thing.
Oh, no, no, no.
And we did get all those other comments that were lingering out there.
Oh, good, yeah. There was some spam comments out there. Um, people trying to sell stuff by making a pothole issue. Alright, so it sounds like that's it for future agenda items. Uh, we're gonna move on to item H, administrative reports. We got the February report. Oh, you have to doubt it thoroughly before, there we go. Then it comes up.
Now we're talking, now we're talking.
You looking at property tax?
Sales taxes and property taxes.
Sales taxes down a little bit still.
And if you could mind, the two large legs from twenty-twenty-four, property tax might be close to the same. It was just collected or, or reported at a later date, but, you know, water picked back up, sewer picked back up.
Started watering yesterday myself, so. Doing my part.
Everything's looking good.
The police department has graciously stepped in to help with code enforcement and hire vacancy.
Sure they're enjoying that?
They hide it well. See something there you don't like?
No. Just calls are up in February.
Yeah.
Gonna start burning those chimney fires.
Chimney fires?
Beans on the stove.
TJ, you need a few more service orders to do?
No, he said he's good. He's good for now.
Wonder if in December, the same two people did garage sales this year last year?
Yes, we did.
People still speeding.
Oh, yeah.
Gotta get there.
But I say that the police department, uh, I watched the crossing guard today and I appreciate police, you know, involvement in the school zones and at least for both times in the morning and the afternoon is so important. And we can't, they can't be everywhere, but just so grateful, you know, to have them.
Is that an SRO that does crossing? No, so not an officer?
No, but I think he's talking about, I've seen their vehicles being placed strategically in different points where buses make a lot of stops, especially on your, your larger roads. They're doing a good job.
Keeping an eye on what traffic's doing.
Or stopping for the buses, so I've seen quite a number of cars get pulled over for that.
Okay, I thought you said crossing guard.
The crossing guards are fixing to get LED signage, so.
Okay, maybe we were talking about crossing guards. Um, oh, the library's not reporting their numbers, uh-oh.
Yeah, they are. They're there for February.
Oh, they're there, okay. Yeah, we're good, okay. I looked yesterday and they weren't there, so they must be.
I just got them last, yesterday, or maybe Monday.
Okay. Alright, right in the nick of time. No late fees. Charge them a late fee if they get in late. Yeah, keep a book for a year, it'll cost you a buck and a half.
So I did notice like on, chief on the calls for service, you know, there's twenty-four alarms. Uh, if, if there's a large number of false alarms replaced, do we have it set up to where they have to pay a fee if we responded or no? Do we have a lot of issues like that or is just, it's kind of hit and miss?
Most of them are. Certain location.
Cause I know some agencies have like a twenty-five-dollar fee if we go out there five times in a certain.
Oh, it's like set up? Oh, okay.
It's not a big issue.
Cause it, it uses a lot of manpower, so.
We can send SRO out there. Alright. Well, that's, that's everything, everybody. Any questions about the report? No, report's gone, okay? No, we were done. Uh, income statement was included. Any questions or comments about that?
Mayor and council, I do have a few things.
Oh, yeah.
Um, in looking at the income statement, the monthly financials this month, there were a couple of things that I wanted to make you aware of. Um, as you're looking through it, you will notice that police and fire overtime are both over budget. We are halfway through the year and, uh, they are over budget on their overtime expenditures. Um, just so that we're watching it, it's due to a couple of things, National Night Out, Christmas on Main. Um, some of those things, uh, resulted in increased costs. Um, park maintenance is over budget, um, which is to be expected since.
The park's looking very nice.
Done some park maintenance at quite some time, so we appreciate all of, um, the parks' performance. We're on getting some things caught up.
Irrigation works.
And irrigation fixed. There were quite a few things that just needed to be addressed and then, um, street signage is also over budget. That was because we had to ins- or we needed to install quite a few street signs in a new development, so. Um, those are just some things that I wanted you all to know that we are watching very closely as we progress through.
But like overtime at the police, it's not for lack of staffing or people having to make it up necessarily.
It's, it's a multi-factors, part of it is having. We have three one-time training, um, so it's not an overall staffing problem, it's a training problem, manpower. But it's also a vast amount of, we bring everybody in for too big events that are multiple hours, it really hits pretty quick.
No, that makes sense.
But it's not, it, it's not a day-to-day operation, so.
It's where that we budgeted too little.
Right.
For the budget.
But the fact that you're managing and watching, that's, that's what I like to hear, so, well, it's just being managed and supervised, it's.
Budget cycle will start in a month or something, right? I mean, it starts. We'll figure that out next, and next time, oh, nice, okay, I was just kidding, but really?
Yeah, so we'll take, because March thirty-first, we will finish six months in our fiscal year and so, um, our department directors will start. Looking at it and start, we'll start talking about requests for next year.
Yeah, just about as long as baseball season.
More officers in the summertime on the streets in their right cheek.
With SROs, yeah.
You know, with.
Oh, when they're not covering vacation time, yeah.
No motorcycle yet.
We had one for a while and a mustachioed officer that would mount it, but I'm not sure. I think we sold that unit, it was a Harley.
We did, it had reached end of life, so we did do a, uh.
Did he shave and get on the streets or?
No, he still is, he's still. He's working, he's working.
What? So, anything else? Did you, you said you had a couple of things, were there any others? Awesome, alright, so we're done with item H, anything else? Alright, that takes us down to item I, executive session, of which we have none, so we're not gonna jay-reckebene, so that takes us to, okay, adjourn, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I say we stay here, listen.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion here in a second. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, you can stay here, this time at seven twenty-nine and we are adjourned.
Since there's no root beer, I'll.